Call to order. The meeting of the Rutherford County Regional Planning Commission for September 8, 2025. At this time, we will ask Commissioner Lee Bogal to lead us in our prayer and pledge of allegiance. Commissioner?
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this opportunity to be here this evening, that we may work on behalf of the citizens of Rutherford County. We ask that you watch over as we go through and try to plan for the future of Rutherford County and the present, and that you watch over the decisions that are made here tonight that benefit the majority of Rutherford County's citizens. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the time to be able to come here this evening, and we thank you for the opportunity and the safety and security of our emergency services, our police officers, and our military watching over such gigantic communities that you watch over. And in the Father, we thank you for this opportunity and this chance to stand up right here.
Amen.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I beg to sit. This time, we have our roll call. And determination of quorum. Madam Secretary.
Tim Aberwater. Jeff Phillips.
Present.
Mike Cusch.
Present.
Lee Bogal.
Here.
Charlotte P.
Here.
Craig Goots.
Here.
Tim Thompson.
Here.
Michael Shirley.
Here.
Jason Beavers.
Here.
Amber Brown.
Pettis Reed.
Here.
We have a quorum.
We do have a quorum. We now have the approval of our minutes from July 28, 2025, and I will ask the Vice Chairman, Lee Bogal, to do those.
I have reviewed those minutes. I'm sorry, but order therefore.
Have a motion to approve, do have a second.
Aye.
Have a motion to approve and second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Has been approved. Any public comments at this time?
No, sir, no public comments.
No public comments. See what, fellas, somebody told me my coat was loud, but I didn't realize that was the problem. Turn the volume down on this monitor, but that's not it, I don't think. We'll ask that upstairs can come down if they can almost down a little bit down here, we'll appreciate it. We'll move right on to items withdrawn or deferred. Think it might be that kicking back on us.
I'll try and see what happens.
All right, items withdrawn or deferred?
No, sir, everything's still on the agenda.
No items withdrawn or deferred. Any move on into our new business then? This is rezoning, zoning ordinances. All rezoning, regulation amendments request will be considered at the October 16, 2025, Board of Commissioners meeting unless deferred or withdrawn by the Planning Commission or their applicants. Beginning one with Robert Timothy Holder, REZ 25022, location is 1602 Flat Rock Road. Commissioner is District 4, Robert P. Size of the site is approximately 1.1 acres. Tax map is 90E, Group A. Parcel is 6.02. Existing zoning is commercial services. Proposed zoning is commercial general. Mr. DeMossi.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you, and good evening, everybody. The property that we're looking at, as Mr. Reed stated, is located along Flat Rock Road. Most of this property was rezoned commercial services when the current zoning map took effect back in January of 2013. The site has been used for non-residential purposes since 1997. There was a small portion, about a half an acre or so, that was adjacent to the property. You can kind of see, it looks like it's got, you see that little line right through the middle of it there? That was the original property line. And then the little half acre was added to it back in 2017 and was also zoned commercial services at that time, I'm sorry, yeah, in 2017. Properties were combined in 2018, excuse me. The applicant would like to zone this property commercial general to have the ability to sell automobiles, not just work on them, but they also would like to have the automobile repair shop. Commercial services zoning does allow for repair but does not allow the sales. Commercial general does allow them both. There's not a concept plan that was submitted with this application, however, the applicant has indicated there's not going to be really any redevelopment of the site. It's really going to be using it as, in the condition that it's in, so if there is anything, it would be fairly minimal. You can see the property already has two access points along Flat Rock Road. They're not proposing anything additional. If they were to make any changes, of course, we would want to see an engineered site plan at that time. Landscape buffering is required between commercial and residentially zoned properties. However, this is already the case due to the fact that they're CS-zoned. Any changes to the zoning would not change these landscape requirements, however, if they were to make any changes to the site, we would have to evaluate any potential additional landscaping at that time, and of course, our performance standards would still be in effect for this property. Like I said earlier, the property is already zoned for commercial purposes. I'm not as concerned about this had I been if this were residentially zoned property. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that the Planning Commission may have.
Messrs, any questions or comments? Or staff? If not, we'll ask that the applicant come forward this time. Or his representative.
Matt Taylor of SEC at 850 Middleton and C Boulevard, representing Mr. Tim Holder. Doug did a good job describing the project. Mr. Holder is a long-term business owner here in Rutherford County. I think he's owned three or four different types of businesses here and wants to continue to use the property. He's had several people approach him about continuing to use the mechanic shop and then also sale on the site. So before he started the sale, he wanted to get permissions instead of coming, doing it the other way. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for the applicant?
Do you happen to know how many? Sure, the setbacks roll and things like that.
I think whenever we did the site plan for his previous business, I think you could fit probably maybe like 10 vehicles along the front edge or something.
And much like the ones? They don't interrupt traveling.
Right. Yes, sir, that's it.
If not?
Thank you.
Thank you, man. We'll now move into our public comment period. We'll open that up at this time. Anyone have any comments, either for or against? We'll ask that you come forward this time. We'll give you three minutes to make those comments. Anyone? Mr. P., we're glad to have you with us, or Chairman P.
Thank you. Let's see if I can make that volume on the microphones go down a little bit. Oh, I was contacted by the owner there, and my answer to him, like I do everybody, is call to your neighbors, ask them, you know, if they have objections to it. I have yet to receive any calls against this at all, therefore, I would be in favor of him being allowed to do this. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Seeing no one else, we'll close the comment period. Commissioners? Move to approve a staff comment. We have an approval and a second. Any further comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I would be remiss not to ask the applicant to cut down those Bradford pear trees. For those that know me, they'll understand. I mean, I'd be voting in favor. Thank you.
All right, sir. You've been heard. Any other comments? If not, Madam Secretary, call the roll.
Tim Aberwater.
Yes.
Jeff Phillips.
Yes.
Mike Cusch.
Yes.
Lee Bogal.
Yes.
Charlotte P. Craig Goots.
Yes.
Tim Thompson.
Yes.
Michael Shirley.
Yes.
Jason Beavers.
Yes.
Question carries.
It has been approved. Moving on, item two, John Refkin, REZ 25023, location is 6525 John Bragg Highway. Mr. District 4 is Robert P. Size of site is approximately 2.6 acres. Tax map is 105, parcel 12104. Existing zoning is residential medium density. Proposed zoning is light industrial. Mr. Chairman, or Mr. Director? I was looking up there at Robert P. thinking Chairman, but I said, Director? Director Bossy?
I think that's a promotion for me, I'll take it.
I've got so much echo here, and I wear hearing aid, you won't believe what I'm hearing up here. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The applicant's letter states that they would like to zone this property, as you stated, to light industrial, and this is right from their application, with the intent of developing a modern, community-oriented self-storage facility. The letter, which is included with your agenda packet, further states that the facility would not have any permanent staff or bathroom facilities. They're proposing to utilize less than 50% of the property and also use low-impact lighting and full perimeter fencing for security. Self-storage, many warehouses are allowed by right in the light industrial zone, just so you are aware of that. The applicant has submitted a concept plan, which has been included as well on your agenda packets, on your iPads, and there's also some architectural renderings in there as well. These are not binding, this is not a planned development, it does give you an idea of how he would like to develop the property. Should the property develop in this manner, of course, changes would need to be made to conform the county regulations for self-storage and warehouse facilities, however, that would be done through the site plan approval process. Access to this property would be along John Bragg Highway. Of course, this is a state road, and TDOT approval would be required for any new or improved access points. We have not asked for a traffic study at this point, however, that's something that we can talk about as we, if this is approved, as we move through the process. Again, that's something TDOT also has some leverage. If they would like to see some sort of a traffic study, they can certainly require that as well. Industrially-zoned properties are required to provide a type 3 buffer adjacent to residentially-zoned properties. Of course, this would be shown on an engineered site plan as well. That distance is typically 50 feet, however, it can be reduced to 25 feet if you use a solid visual screen like a privacy fence or something like that. However, as I said, that would all be shown on an engineered site plan, so we would have another chance to look at that should this application be approved. And of course, our performance standards would also apply. This property is located within the suburban belt character area in our current comprehensive plan, and John Bragg Highway is also shown as an urban-style corridor. Both of these, the corridors and the character areas do make recommendations for non-residential type densities and development. There's existing light industrially-zoned property about 650 feet or so to the west of the property at the intersection of Florington Road. Mike's kind of showing it there on the map. That property's been developed in that manner for quite some time. This is a relatively small site and would be limited in development options due to the lack of availability of septic soils. So with that, we do feel that this request is appropriate, and we do recommend approval. With that, I know the applicant is present, and either he or staff will be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Messrs, any questions or comments? Staff.
Thank you.
Bogal?
I noticed there's no median cut across from the posed entrance. The next one to the east, does it have a turn lane or something available in case someone pulling a trailer or needs to make a turn?
It doesn't appear that it does. Mike's got that up on the screen right now.
That part is something you think the traffic study might identify?
Right, and it's something that we'll probably have some discussions with TDOT about as well, so.
Thank you.
Mr. Shirley?
Thank you. Doug, is there, this may be a question for the applicant, is there, was there any suggestion to make this a PUD instead? I know we've had a lot of opposition in the area for commercial development, and I don't really have a problem with this being there, but if we rezone it, then we're opening up a lot of different opportunities or allowed uses by right, right? I mean, we're taking, we're making a pretty big jump from residential to industrial.
Right, well, to answer your question, I don't think there's been any conversations about a PUD. Like I said, the site is small, relatively speaking, so, I mean, just, yeah, and it's all, there's no septic soil on the property, so the options would be fairly limited as to what could be put on here anyway.
And how, how does the stormwater retention work for an area with no soils? Like, is it just to hold it, and we think it would just naturally evaporate because it's not going to really sink into the soils there?
No, we would, we would have to do a mixture of things. I don't believe we've talked to the design team about that, but there are several options. Infiltration is not one of them.
Most of the water there is shedding which way?
My regular map is not working. I'll have to use a variety of map.
But, I mean, this is a rezoning, not necessarily a site plan, like you all are going to have, that would all be covered for sure in engineering?
That's correct. What you're looking at right now really is more as the use appropriate for the area. Like I said, when it comes, like you mentioned, when it comes to the drainage and everything else, I mean, that's something they're still going to have to demonstrate that they conform to. If they don't, then we're not going to approve the site plan.
Yeah, it looks like it goes to this southeast corner. I don't know if that's a sinkhole, or there is a pipe a little bit farther away, but I have to look into if it's taking water or discharging water. It looks like this sinkhole might be ultimate place of the ghost.
I don't have the list of permitted uses of light industrial, but that's one thing that concerns me, is that I realize that there's one down the street there, but that's the concern that I have, so I'll look forward to hearing from the applicant.
Other questions? If not, I'll ask for the applicant or a representative to come forward this time. Good evening.
Can y'all hear me okay? Yep, great. I've prepared a little something to make this easier, but first of all, I wanted to thank everybody for being here. My name is Joan Reiken, and I am the applicant for the rezoning of the property at 6525 John Bragg Highway. As I stated in the application letter, my intent is to provide a valuable service for Rutherford County families while remaining considerate and respectful of my neighbors. So the requested zoning would allow me to build a modern, community-oriented self-storage facility designed to ensure safety and blend into the existing community. I believe the property's location within the suburban belt character area and direct access to John Bragg Highway, an urban-style corridor, as well as the property's proximity to existing light industrial zoning makes it an ideal candidate for the proposed use, aligning with both the existing land use patterns and/or proposed development. As I mentioned before, I'm a resident of Murfreesboro, Rutherford County, and I am deeply committed to ensuring this project aligns with our community's values, providing much-needed service to growing families and the community while prioritizing safety and minimizing impact on neighboring property. The proposed facility would incorporate several features, including perimeter fencing, gated access, security cameras, and low-impact lighting, as well as extensive landscape buffers, reflecting our commitment to having a positive impact on the community. With all of this in mind, I made a point to personally reach out and explain the project to my neighbors, spending the last six weeks introducing myself and informing them of my intention to rezon this property and what I plan to do with it. So through these efforts, I was able to reach approximately 80% of my neighbors, and I'm happy to share that not only did I receive overwhelming support for the project, but five of my neighbors, including three who own properties directly adjacent to mine, have either emailed or called Commissioner P. to share their support for my project, with a handful of them deciding to join us tonight and share their support in person. The exhibit that I've put together for us tonight shows those neighbors that have personally emailed or called Commissioner P. and who are here in person as well. So I took care in advance of some of these questions that I know would generally concern all of us, and particularly my neighbors to the east as well, whom my property drains to, to a certain extent. I've made sure to communicate to them and explain exactly what I'm thinking about doing. I've discussed it with them extensively, and they fully support my project, and they have shared that through email with Commissioner P. and myself. So with all of these facts in mind, I respectfully request that you approve this rezoning application, and I thank you for your time, and I'm happy to answer any questions you all might have.
Messrs? Mr. P.
Mr. Chair, knowing that you're in, you're from this area, so you're familiar with the traffic, well, the speed and the number of vehicles, I'm hoping, I mean, we'll need turn lanes definitely, and as, knowing where the turnarounds are as well.
So.
For trailers and, yes, you know, just you're aware of the turn lanes and everything that will need to be done for this development.
So we are fully aware that this is a major highway, and we are prepared to comply with whatever requirements TDOT, as well as county engineering, might require for us to be able to have this project there. Now, with that in mind, I would also like, for everybody's peace of mind, to share that a self-storage facility doesn't particularly generate an intense amount of traffic or peak hours, mostly, you know, lower volume, people that store things. There's not going to be a gas station level amount of traffic going in and out of that. And we, as our site plan showed, we're prepared to have a right-only, right-only entry and egress off the property to make sure that, you know, it's as safe as it can be. But I think with that in mind, we're also just making sure that we comply with all of that, with all of the TDOT requirements for that.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman?
Thank you.
Are you familiar with the PUD zoning?
I am, and I, it's something that I actually did originally look into, and I actually mentioned it to some of the, or briefly discussed it with some of the engineering staff. And it is a significantly more involved project. I think the process as a whole would take a significant amount of time as well as effort that I feel like might, you know, might be extremely difficult for the scale and the type of project that we're planning on developing. I thought that it might be a more sensible approach on my end to do what I have tried to do, which is approach all of my neighbors and share all of my plans and what I intend to do, and see if there had any concerns. And I can, I'm also happy to share that nobody has reached out to me or shared with me any concerns about the project within all of the neighbors that I approached, which I spent several weeks going around the area, the vicinity, and speaking to everybody I could.
Yeah, I definitely want to commend you, the way that you've reached out to your neighbors and talked to them, you seem very prepared. This is the way that applicants should do it. It's great when you come to us and the map of the people that you've reached out to. My concern is just the rezoning, if your project doesn't materialize, and we've rezoned it for light industrial, it's changing what, instead of self-storage, it opens up the door for other things to go in. I don't know, and this will be a question that I ask our staff later, but would you be willing to restrict the use of this to self-storage?
I would have no objection to that. Now, with that in mind as well, I would like to share that I believe, Mr. DeMossi mentioned this earlier, that the use of light industrial uses in this property would be extremely limited because of the no-septic soils. So I don't think you could expect there to be any, you know, repair shops or cars or any other uses that would have a higher, you know, traffic count or impact because of the lack of the possibility to just have bathrooms in there and full-time staff. So it would have to be limited to something like what I'm doing as is, even if it was approved, just straight rezoning to light industrial.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I got a couple of questions. Do you have any of these operations anywhere in the county, or is this your first time to do the self-storage?
This is the first time I've ever, this is my first project. I've had this idea since I was pretty much in college, and I've just been preparing to do this.
Excellent idea. I happen to own one, and your presentation is phenomenal, and I'd like to touch base later. I know they got a gathering next week in Knoxville with Self-Storage Association owners, great resource. It's a really clean business. I hear a lot of folks talk about it.
Thank you.
And all that. I've been, I've been at it since 2004. Really clean business.
Great, thank you. I really appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Do you have any plans for storage of RVs, boats, any wheeled?
No, sir.
Vehicles, or outdoor storage of any type?
No, sir. This has been strictly, our intent is strictly to have inside storage. Actually, I believe I mentioned that in the letter that I submitted to the Planning Commission, that the buildings that we're planning on using here are, you know, significantly low-profile. That's what we've tried to get from the manufacturers, so it limits the height of these buildings to not be a nuisance and eyesore to drivers, to passersby, as well as to limit. Another, another one of the factors that I took into account when laying this out was the lighting, the light pollution to my neighbors as is. I feel it's a very nice area, and I don't want to change that. So I've, when we submit to planning staff and to engineering staff, we'll make sure to include low-profile lighting on the buildings, no high-rise lights that would be a nuisance to everybody. So, but to answer your question, no, sir, we do not plan to have any outdoor RV or boat storage, any of that.
Other questions? If not, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
We'll now open it up for comments. Anyone here that wants to make a comment, either for or against, we ask you to come forward. You'll have three minutes. Tell us your name and address. Good evening, sir.
My name is Daniel Kunefer. I live on 4019 Flat Rock Road. I've lived on the east side of Murfreesboro for 20 years now. Lived in Rutherford County for 39 of my 40 years. I'm in support of his project. We own the land adjacent to it across John Bragg on the corner of Floriton, John Bragg, and we have a residential rental there, and we have no opposition to what he's doing. We believe that the area needs development. It's, there's not much out there. It's not going to hurt. We've got a big four-lane highway going through there, might as well use it for something. Really all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? You're getting your exercise tonight, aren't you?
I can, I can definitely use it. I want to repeat something that Commissioner Thompson and Mr. Shirley both said. John has done this the right way, made life a whole lot easier on me. When he first contacted me, asked to meet, we set up a time, and he showed me his drawings, what he had in mind, and the thing I told him, the most important thing for him to do was to talk to his neighbors. He has done an excellent job, better than anybody I can remember in the past doing. And I think this man is going to do what he says he'll do, so I have no qualms in telling you that I approve of this. I personally would much rather see structures like this go through there than residential housing that will basically crowd up, and he's actually not going to destroy the scenery through there. There'll be buffers, most people will never notice that it's there, but anyway, thank you, and thank you, John.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Not seeing anyone, I will close the comment period. Messrs? Other comments or a motion? Move to approve a staff comment. Motion to approve. And a second. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman? Is there a way to? Is there a way to restrict a property like this with to this use? I have no no problem with the application. My my hang-up is just the rezoning completely. If, that's my question.
With this particular zoning classification, no. That would have to be through a plan development. It's the only way to restrict the use.
And can you educate me on the difference in application fee? Is it a is it a lot more?
Well, the base fee for both is the same. Now, when you get to a non-residential plan development, there's an additional fee for the square footage of the buildings. So it can, depending on the size of the buildings, it can be fairly substantial. Now, what he's talking about, it probably wouldn't be a whole lot different. I'd be, I'd guess, several hundred dollars, but not like some applications that we've seen where it was significantly more than that.
Madam Secretary, please call the row.
Ms. Everwater?
Yes.
Jeff Phillips?
Mike Bush?
Yes.
Lee Bogle?
Yes.
Charlotte P.?
Craig Gooch?
Yes.
Tim Thompson?
Michael Shirley?
No.
Jason Beavers? Tedis Reed?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Motion does carry. Moving now into item three. Chris Rudd, Arpropco 1000 LLC, REZ 25-019, location is Last Cassis Pike, Mockingbird Lane. The commissioner for District Four is Robert P. The size of the site is approximately 20.2 acres, tax map 68 parcel 41. Distilling zoning is planned unit development. Proposed zoning is planned unit development amendment for number of bedrooms and building sizes and locations. Mr. Demossi?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Our last zoning application tonight, as you stated, is for Mockingbird Estates. This was approved by the Board of Commissioners back in December of 2023. The preliminary plan for the development, for the single-family element at least, was approved by the planning commission back in July of last year. We have not seen the site plan submitted yet for the townhome portion of this project. The applicant is proposing to change the sizes and the number of bedrooms for the single-family attached and detached product. You'll see in your staff comments that I put a chart in there showing what the original approval was and what the proposed amendment. You'll notice that the number of bedrooms on both the attached product, which are the townhomes, and the detached product, which are the single-family detached homes, had original number of bedrooms no more than three, with the size of the units listed as there as well. They would like to change both the number of bedrooms, rather than have three maximum, just say two minimum. That way, if they have a if they have a product that's got four bedrooms or something to that effect, that they wouldn't be in violation of the plan development conditions as part of the pattern book. They also feel that the change in sizes, and I'm sure the applicant will go into a little bit more detail with this, is a little more responsive to the real estate market as it's currently being experienced. We've been in conversations with the design team regarding the drainage of the property as well. We did state earlier in the report that there are drainage concerns with the step area. The applicant has been working with staff and officials at CUD to accommodate the stormwater runoff coming through the, and you can kind of see it, Mike can kind of show where it's coming through the property right in that area. What you see there is a an easement that will be dedicated for drainage through the property to get the stormwater that's coming from across 96, Last Cassis Pike, onto the property, and then also through the property. That's also going to require the shifting of some of those buildings just a little bit. So you see that that concept plan that they had before you actually does show those buildings shifted over just a little bit to accommodate that drainage pattern that will be going through the property. Beyond that, everything else with this development is pretty much the same. They're not changing access. They're not changing any improvements or things that they were proposing. Something that I will mention, however, is, you'll recall on the original plan that there were actually two access points onto Mockingbird Lane. There's the one that is currently there, and then there was a second one. Mike's going to kind of show the area there, right in that area. We've been in conversations with property owner to the north about an extension of the Bora subdivision. I guess that's the north and the northwest, if you will, kind of where that cell tower is. Mike's going to kind of show it on the on the big map here. The developer of that property is looking to add another section of Bora, and what we have asked the applicant to provide as part of that development is a stubout, kind of where Mike is showing in that area. We know that there's been a lot of concern about traffic on Mockingbird Lane, especially going back toward Emery. We feel that having that back access point will actually provide an alternate alternate route of getting back to Compton Road without having to actually go onto Mockingbird and Emery. So that is something, that's the reason why that access point onto Mockingbird was removed, was because of this other access point, which there was a stubout already, but we've been, like I said, in conversations with the developer of that property to the north to allow that, make that connection. So I just wanted to make that point. That was another change in this that I did want to point out. So with that, the applicant is present, and we'll be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Messrs? Any questions or comments for staff?
Doug, do you have the original plan that was approved for, I believe it was 22? Do you have that?
Well, do I have it handy? No, but can we get it? We can get it and show it on the screen if that's what you want, if you want to see that.
Say that again.
We don't have it just right here, but I can, we can pull it up on the SharePoint and then show it if you would like.
Yeah. I'd just like to see the difference.
If there's any other questions, I mean, feel free to ask while I'm I'm looking for this.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I see that they have dedicated the 50-foot right-of-way, but are they making road improvements to Mockingbird Lane? I may have missed that. I'm sorry. I have received a couple of phone calls about this project with regards to Mockingbird Lane.
Yes, they they plan on making improvements along the limits of their property, along Mockingbird Lane and the intersection of Mockingbird and Highway 96. Right now, it kind of sits down low, Mockingbird does, and you've got to ramp up to get to 96. So we want them to create a landing there. They are not currently extending any improvements past the limits of their property. But like Doug said, we've been talking to the Bora developer, just to the, kind of the north, east, northwest of this development, and, you know, thought it would be best to have traffic to be able to go to Compton through this development. He's bringing it up now. So they had two, two connections, but we felt that that street B was not very beneficial. It's just, you know, right there next to the other entrance. It did provide another alleyway, a way to get to the back alleys. But we thought if they had that other connection with Bora, you know, worked with that other development team, move that street over to the adjacent property to make a full connection out to Compton would be better than sending traffic down Mocking. That that was our thought.
But they are going to continue, they're going to widen the road for the length of their, we've removed the secondary access, so they're going to, they're going to widen the road from Highway 96 to the end of their property on Mockingbird, even though they're, even though we're taking out that second connection?
Yes, yes. They're, they're, we're going to require that they make improvements all the way down, at least on their side, widen this all the way up. There are two, if you know this area, there are two pretty sharp turns on Mockingbird. Almost a 90-degree turn right here. So our thought was, instead of getting traffic to go down this way, which people will do, but we want to promote them to go north through the development.
But it'll be deeded right-of-way on their side of the road?
Yes, they'll widen, they promised to with the first PUD, work on this side of the road, this intersection. And then with, working with them, we said, well, this little stub doesn't provide much benefit. Why don't you use that, those resources, make a connection here? So this will have a, this will be another cul-de-sac here, and then you can go down Bora Street to Esalen, Esalen Port here, right. That that was one of our thoughts. Like I said, they they still haven't submitted revised construction plans yet. We did look at the original layout. There was a lot of work needed to be done. Drainage system has changed since then. They originally had five or six huge pipes rolling through the middle of this. Now. Okay, so they, yeah, they they've, they did have pipes that started at the edge of the step field and went development. So we haven't seen the revised instruction plans for this proposal. They are, they're proposing a big box over here, and then looks like some kind of retaining wall this end, but I'm not sure what. But this will all be bypass flow. They'll capture, they'll have to capture all of their drainage, get it into this pond, or possibly create another pond over here for this side development here. I'm not sure how that's going to work, separate flow.
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to make sure, because we don't know what's going to happen past their property later, and that connection to the other neighborhood may not happen. I just want to ensure that they're going to bring that Mockingbird Lane up to county standards in width and base for that whole length from 96 to the end of their property.
Right. So, yeah, they, that's, that's what they talked about originally. They were going to make these improvements plus this additional road. We're going to hold them to this Mockingbird improvement piece here, even though their main access point is still here.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Mr.? Mr. Chairman, I got a question. On swap four bedrooms versus, is there going to be a change in total bedroom impact on vehicle?
Well, as far as the maximum number of bedrooms, that's probably a question that's better suited to the applicant. It won't really affect the parking requirements or anything as far as the houses are concerned or even the townhomes. I think what they're proposing is still going to be adequate for that. Of course, they'll be limited by whatever septic soils are available for the step system. But I don't think they want to see every unit as like a four-bedroom or, you know, anything like that. I think it just gives them the option that if there are a couple of plans that they have that they would like to offer, and somebody would like to take advantage of that, they would have the ability to do it under the revised plan versus what they had approved under the original.
Messrs? Anything else?
What, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, one other thing to just to mention. There is actually some language in the pattern book, if you look, and it has to do with the, it's the overall, Mike, can you pull up that page? It's the the overall, yeah, go, I think it's the other way, that go down into the book a little, yeah, right there. That first bullet point right there. I know that's been a discussion point on several plan developments. This is not something that's new. This this was added into the original pattern book, just so everybody knows it's still there. All homes developed within the subject should not be sold in bulk to a developer or owner of rental units for the purpose of operating a rental community. I just wanted to make sure that that language, again, was in the original. It's staying in the proposed changes as well, just to point that out. The language that you see that's highlighted on here at this point, yeah, at this point was in the original. I just wanted to make sure that everybody realized it's still there.
No more questions? That? I'll ask that the representative come forward this time.
Zero, Middle Tennessee Boulevard, here in Murfreesboro. As Doug said, the the main changes for this were to adjust those bedroom counts and then to adjust the square footage range. We did update the layout, so the drainage works better. It's a better design from a drainage perspective. And then all of our roadway commitments that we had the first time are still in there. We have not changed those at all. So that's widening along our entire project frontage, adding shoulders, and then flattening out the intersection of Mockingbird and Last Cassis and making it a three-lane section instead of just a two-lane. So all of those are staying the same, not changing that at all. So other than that, I will be happy to answer any questions. We did have a neighborhood meeting a few weeks ago on this. I think their conversation centered around drainage and traffic. I was not at that, but that was what I was reported back to.
Mr. P.
I appreciate the wording not to be sold in bulk to a developer or owner of rental units. But I kind, I do feel like it's kind of a bait, which, that we approved the larger lots now in larger homes, and now they're smaller. But I do feel better about it with that safety being in in the.
What I would say is that the home sizes have changed some, but the lot sizes are staying exactly the same. And so the the home sizes are changing a little bit, but the lot sizes are not.
Chairman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Matt?
Yes, sir.
Want to piggyback off the statement rental unit?
Yes.
Will all of these units sold?
They will, yes, sir.
The developers will not?
That's right. They'll sell them all.
HOA, long-term rentals, if they allow rentals, all?
So they they could allow rentals. So if I wanted to go buy one, it's not set up to restrict an individual's rights. It's set up so that you don't have what happened across the street happen. And that's exactly what that statement is trying to prevent there. But if you want to, if you bought it, you lived there for a while, and then wanted to rent it, it's not meant to restrict the individual. Now, the HOA could elect to do that if they wanted.
There, will there be restrictions on how many units per?
Um, we've not talked about that, to be quite frank, Commissioner. We just said we were not, my client is not going to develop it and sell it to a rental developer. That that language is really intended to prevent what happened across the street. We've not talked about limiting the number of any individuals necessary. I don't, I don't know that I've ever went down that path.
I think is it possible for ownership restricted for persons for the two of those?
I think that would be up the homeowners association to deal with that. I'm not sure what condition this approval on, considering first property rights, so that would be, I think, got for you is probably the.
My concern, I is that for developers, residential, on a commercial rental, I'll just, never again, I'll something that's long time ago. Matt, I hope you understand?
Yes, yes, sir.
Don't object, but what I do, be developed, are all of us, those, sold, building those?
Yes, sir. My client has had rental community developers or builders, one or the other, approach him, and we have simply had to turn them away, said, you cannot do that here. You have to build and sell. that here. You have to build and sell to individuals is what you have. So, uh, he's had that opportunity and, uh, we've just, frankly, we just pointed it out. He's, he's given those opportunities up and chose not to try to change that. But he understands what he has to do. And I, what I will say is we've used, I don't know if we've used this language in the county very often, um, but it's become very prevalent, if not across the board in the city of Murfreesboro, because they had a couple of these communities and they didn't want those either. So it's basically language that's required in every PUD, and so we just copied that. And so it seems to be successful in the city so far. We've been using it several years there for those same concerns that you have.
This type of development is something that I actually.
Yes, sir.
I don't know. Whoever the developer is. Homeowner.
Sir.
Building. Really? Park.
Sure. Understand.
Matt, would this HOA be responsible for maintaining yards as far as landscaping, mowing, uh, enforcing street parking regulations and that sort of?
They will for, they'll maintain the yards, uh, for the townhouses and enforcing the parking regulations. The detached lots will mow their own yard.
What, sorry, uh, to piggyback on, what about the park, parking? Is that, is that what you had said?
Yes, the, the HOA will enforce that, um, will maintain those private alleys and that private parking as well.
The, um, but, by allowing more bedrooms, potentially that would allow more people living there, perhaps more cars. There's no changes. You said there's, the, the house sizes on the detached units is going to be decreasing, but the lot sizes are staying the same. Is the parking in those areas going to increase with the extra bedrooms?
So we, we added, uh, I think about 10 or 12 additional visitor parking spaces.
For the townhomes? That's all that. What about for the neighborhood parking?
The, the, in the detached, those all allow, those will all have two car garages, plus they'll allow two car, four cars to park in their driveway already. And so.
Sticking with the four cars?
Yes.
So there'll be some street parking in that. Y'all anticipate street parking? I would anticipate.
I mean, I, I mean, I've lived in neighborhoods. I mean, we had four spaces and two garage spaces and we still parked on the street with three, with three cars. And so I'm not going to say there's not going to be any, but there's the ability to park six cars per lot off, off the street.
Thank you.
I had helped me a little bit on. A lot more bedroom. In more bedroom.
So CUD, and that, CUD does not base their, uh, flows on bedroom counts. They just base them on a per unit and it's an average, because we know that not every unit's going to be four. It's just, we've got some options. Um, you know, some, some people want a fourth bedroom, or it's going to get disguised as an office without a, you know, honestly. And so, uh, clients is trying to do it the right way and say, I know there's going to be some four bedrooms. There needs to be some four bedrooms, but, um, we, uh, not all of them. It's just an option. So I'd say a handful of them in here will be four bedroom.
They'll drive that, I guess, between you and them. You'll drive the, that's all.
Yes, sir.
Anyone else with questions? If not.
Thank you, sir.
Chairman, some, something else to note, um, while Matt's walking back to his seat. They do propose to do this in two phases. So if they don't prove to be a good neighbor, we have another shot at it. So then.
Okay. We will open it up. Public comment. Same thing goes here. Come forward. You'll have three minutes. Your for against. Yes, ma'am. We need your name and address.
My name's Mary Brabham. I am a resident of Mockingbird Lane and a lifelong resident of Rutherford County. I am not opposed to growth, but this development plan is not an example of responsible growth. It threatens our safety, privacy, and property values. Let's talk about infrastructure. There is no proposal of widening or upgrades to the full length of Mockingbird Lane nor Emory Road. Mockingbird Lane is a narrow, single lane road, barely accessible for two vehicles to pass safely. With the development across from 96, this road has become a busy cut through and this development will only intensify that traffic. Entrances are inconveniently placed. Although one entrance has been removed, the main entrance is directly across from a private driveway. That is an unacceptable intrusion of daily life. The bore's access point does not adequately address, but could potentially funnel additional traffic onto Mockingbird for those coming to Emory and 96. Highway 96 does offer a better road frontage and infrastructure, yet traffic is being funneled onto a single lane road. Drainage concerns are there for flooding due to the retainment ponds, which is evident for the existing pond across 96. This isn't about affordable housing for working families. The design lacks thoughtfulness and reflects profit-driven motives. The compact layout makes that clear. Townhouses raise great concerns for transient occupancy, and this is not an opposition to progress. It's a plea for thoughtful planning that addresses infrastructure and respects existing residents. I respectfully urge you to delay the project, reevaluate the plan, and take time to do it right. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Chairman.
Robert P., who's on the commissioner of this district, all these locations tonight. I wanted to speak on this. One thing I want to point out, this has already been approved. Basically, it can go in as it is, whether we like that or not. Now, having been a volunteer firefighter and driven fire engines up Mockingbird Lane, do that 90 degree and back in and trying to get over to, uh, Emory, then go to Compton, I'm concerned about the development of these roads. Uh, 96 is just like 231, just like the roads coming in from Eagleville. All our main arteries are full. You know, we've got to look at the road improvements as they come along. And I had a couple of questions and, you know, my main problem with this is having the road improvements on Mockingbird so that we could, if we had to, you know, have easier access to Emory and Compton, which I don't, don't really want to see. More, uh, cars dump back in that way because, you know, the improvements on the roads are not there. But Mike, can you show me where, you said there was some adjacent property that there might be a turnaround? And what is the objective? What are you trying to do there?
So, this, this is, little, uh, development here is called Bora, and, uh, they're proposing to connect this little stub street and have a little cul-de-sac up here and, uh, a street that would stop right here. Well, that, that was our thought is, well, and because this little street B in the original plan didn't benefit the development overall, we said, well, could you take that section and build a road here to connect to this future road that's coming in relatively soon here? So that's, that's our, our proposal is to make a thorough route through here to get to Compton instead of having people to come all this long way around here. So that, that was our one idea, I should say.
Yeah, I understand that a little bit better now. Of course, Commissioner Shirley is my road board representative, and he's been getting the same calls that I have. This young lady that spoke earlier, and like I said, our main concern is not anti-development here, but we want to make sure when we put these in, we've got adequate roads, we've got adequate room for our schools, everything else associated with that. As I said, this has already been approved. I don't see much change in this, but I want to commend y'all for looking and saying, hey, these roads need to be improved. And that's something, hopefully, Michael can help us with, with road board, and hopefully the commission can help the road board with too. Anyway, uh, I know the family that own this property, they want to do what's right for that community over there, and they're good folks. They have family members that live adjacent property. But thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Anyone else? If not, we'll close the comment period. Commissioners?
I got a question. I think it. You make good point. This is already approved as is. No action taken. We had that. Call of project came up. Folks. Going to follow traffic study, determine what's got in place. If we're going to just do a existing approved site, we not wise to pull a traffic study now? What?
I mean, as far as what, what you're asking for, Mr. Thompson, I believe what you're saying is, is there a, is there an opportunity to do something similar? Is that kind of what you're getting at?
Yes, I just thinking if, if this was not in, if the traffic study that we got a third party company looking at, we send folks to have a study. We didn't have that in place. Easily approved, would we not be wise to forward this?
Well, you got to remember, originally that was, and Mr. Taylor may have a, a little bit more, but at the time, you know, we didn't have that in place. So I, I think we all pretty much agreed on what traffic improvements needed to be made, which they can, as Commissioner P. was talking about earlier, I mean, he stated it really well, that yes, this has been approved. It'd be difficult to go back and start putting additional, uh, requirements or conditions on them beyond that. Now, yes, they are making a change, really, in our minds, uh, we think to the betterment at least of, of what we're talking about here. Uh, maybe with the possibilities as well as, as a better access point back to Compton Road as opposed to having to go Mockingbird at least. But trying to go back and do that might be, might be difficult.
Messengers?
Mr. Chairman. What we've been talking. Plan Rutherford. Plan unit. More reduce. Urban growth count. For. All that. Sorry, Mr. President. Change. I will move to approve all of.
Motion to approve. Do we have a second? Have a second for the comments?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Uh, overall, I do find this, uh, change to be better than the original. So I will be supporting this and, and cognizant of the residents in the area, um, their concerns of Mockingbird Lane. I think this will help to keep traffic off of Mockingbird, especially with the connection to Compton. So, um, I did want to, that's why I was kept asking about making sure, just on the record, that we're going to be improving Mockingbird all the way through this project is where, where this project touches Mockingbird. And, um, so with that, I'll, I'll be in support of this motion.
Okay. Any other comment? Not, Madam Secretary, call the robe.
Tim Everwater?
Yes.
Jeff Phillips?
Yes.
Mike Bush?
Yes.
Lee Bogel?
Yes.
Charlotte P.?
Yes.
Ray Gooch?
Yes.
Jim Thompson? Michael Shirley?
Yes.
Jason Beavers? At a screen.
Yes.
Question carries.
It has been approved. We now, uh, remember, remind each and every one of you that all rezoning regulation amendments requested will be considered at the October 16th, 2025 Board of Commissioners meeting, unless deferred or withdrawn by the Planning Commission or the applicant. We move into item eight, staff reports and other business, consideration of adoption, adoption of Plan Rutherford. Boss?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Uh, I don't think I need to make just a whole lot of comments about what we've been doing on Plan Rutherford. I think everybody knows the process that we've gone through. We've talked about it at a number of public meetings. Uh, we had a number of community meetings during this process that has gone through, that we've gone through. Uh, we've also had about, I think, three work sessions on this. And while I don't think we've come up with a document that's going to a hundred percent please everybody, I think we've got something that at least everybody can live with and that gives us a direction moving forward. Uh, with that being said, I do want to take just a moment just to thank the GNRC. Uh, Michael Skipper is here, the executive director, uh, and Jessica Hill as well. They really did the lion's share of the work of this. Just want to, just to commend them and thank them for all the, the hard work that they did on this project. Uh, I also would like to thank the steering committee that worked through Plan Rutherford, especially the, uh, you know, the chair and the vice chair and all the members. Uh, we have some here today. Pettis was on the, and as was Josh Sanders, our fire marshal was on it. I don't have all their names off the top of my head. I don't want to start saying names beyond that or else I'll forget somebody. I don't want anybody to be offended thinking that, uh, I forgot somebody. Charlotte is here as well. See, that's why I usually don't say names, because I tend to forget things. So, uh, but I do want to thank them all for their contributions, uh, throughout this entire process. Uh, with that, uh, our chairperson of the steering committee, Rhonda Allen, was not able to be here tonight, but she did, uh, send a, uh, letter, which I do believe got passed out prior to the meeting, and I wanted you to all to have a copy of that, just to, uh, to so know that, that she's still thinking about this and is still encouraging, uh, us to move forward with this. Uh, I'm going to ask Chairman Reed to, to read that here in just a moment. But something I do want to say with this whole process, that it may feel like, uh, depending on what happens today, if this is adopted by the Planning Commission, that this is the end of the process. I would like to tell you that maybe in a sense, it's the end of the process as far as adoption for the Planning Commission, but it's just the beginning of the changes that we think need to be made, which are outlined in the document. So while we, we have come to a, to a good milestone, a very important milestone here, this is really just the beginning of the work. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Chairman Reed to let him make any comments he may have.
Thank you, Mr. Boss. Yesterday afternoon, I did make contact with, uh, Rhonda Allen, and I had invited her to be here this evening, but she was unable to do so. And, uh, she did send these remarks for us, and I wanted to be sure and read these with her being our chairman. Members of the Planning Commission, thank you for allowing me a moment to address you by Chairman Reed. I wish I could be with you on this very important night. As many of you know, prior to being elected as Rutherford County Commissioner, I first had the privilege of serving as a planning commissioner. My appointment stemmed from a citizen's phone call to the mayor's office asking, why are the Williamson County Dollar General stores so much prettier than ours? Learning there was an open seat on the planning commission, the mayor at that time called back and asked if I had the interest in serving on the planning commission. I thought, sure, how hard can it be? She put in here, insert a laugh track here. I figured I better say yes, because this is one of those times where I better put my money where my mouth is. It's easy to have all the answers when you don't have all the information. I learned quickly I had much to learn. In serving as a planning commissioner, I learned more and loved it more than I ever dreamed possible. To this day, I tell people how important this commission is, because you are making permanent land use decisions. permanent land use decisions. Once the farm is developed, it's never going to be a farm again. The Plan Rutherford process was not quick. It was not easy, and there's no way to design one that will please everyone. It required careful study, input from many voices, and a visions for how our county can both manage and embrace the growth that we know is coming. I want to commend everyone who contributed their time, expertise, and committed to this effort. I especially want to thank the Rutherford County Planning and Engineering staff, GNRC staff, the citizens who gave input, and the many dedicated committee members who worked tirelessly to make sure this plan reflects the values of our community. I trust that the work we've done provides a strong foundation, one that balances growth, infrastructure, and quality of life for the people of Rutherford County. This plan is not a final answer. It's a framework. It gives Rutherford County the tools to make wise choices so that 20 years from now, our children and our grandchildren will inherit a community that still feels like home. You still have big challenges ahead. You will need to update subdivision regulations, zoning ordinances, and the major thoroughfare plan. This is all important, valuable, and pretty thankless work. Thank you for continuing to invest your time and talent in Rutherford County. You truly are the best among us, and I appreciate each of you. I know the decisions before you are never easy, but I'm confident that with wisdom, patience, and vision, you will steward this plan in a way that continues to make Rutherford County a place we're proud to call home. It was my honor and privilege to serve with you all. Rhonda Allen. Mr. Mosse?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. What I'd like to do now is just read the resolution that we drafted for the adoption for the Regional Planning Commission. I know that, just bear with me for just a moment as I read through this, it's not terribly long, but I just do want to read through this. Whereas the Rutherford County Regional Planning Commission adopted the current comprehensive plan on April 25th, 2011, and whereas comprehensive plan should be updated and/or replaced periodically to ensure they remain responsive to growth patterns in the community, and whereas Rutherford County has worked with the Greater Nashville Regional Council on a comprehensive planning process known as Plan Rutherford, and whereas the Plan Rutherford Steering Committee and the Rutherford County Regional Planning Commission have created a vision and value statement for Rutherford County, Tennessee, and whereas the Rutherford, Plan Rutherford Steering Committee and the Rutherford County Regional Planning Commission have created a future land use map and other maps within the plan document, and whereas the Plan Rutherford Steering Committee and the Rutherford County Regional Planning Commission have created goals and implementation steps, and whereas the vision and value statement, the future land use map, and the goals and implementation steps are expressed by Plan Rutherford, a copy of which is attached to this resolution as Exhibit A, and whereas the Rutherford County Regional Planning Commission finds, or Regional Planning Commission finds that it is in best interest of Rutherford County to adopt the attached Plan Rutherford, now therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Regional Planning Commission that pursuant to TCA Section 13-3-301, Plan Rutherford and the maps incorporated therein, a copy of which is attached heretofore as Exhibit A, are hereby adopted and shall supersede and replace in their entirety the comprehensive plan adopted by the Planning Commission on April 25th, 2011, such plan being of no further force or effect as of September 8th, 2025. Be it further resolved that Plan Rutherford and the maps incorporated therein, a copy of which is attached heretofore as Exhibit A, be and hereby is effective on this day, September 8th, 2025. Be it further resolved that the Rutherford County Regional Planning Commission directs that this resolution and a copy of Plan Rutherford and the maps incorporated therein, which is attached heretofore as Exhibit A, be transmitted to the Board of Commissioners for its consideration, adopted this 8th day of September of 2025. I can't make a motion. Although after reading that, I thought I felt like I should.
There's a motion been made right back here, Commissioner Kush. We have a second, Ms. Charlotte P. for the discussion.
So Doug, in this motion, is it a motion for positive or a negative recommendation to the planning commission?
Well, the, the last be it therefore resolved, I suppose, was that we direct the resolution and a copy of the plan to be transmitted to the Board of Commissioners for its consideration. I mean, that the fact that we're adopting doesn't come right out here and say that we recommended approval, but by adopting it, I think that's what we're asking. That makes sense.
We have a motion. It has been made and a second. Please call the roll.
Tim Aberwater?
Yes.
Jeff Phillips? Mike Bush?
Yes.
Lee Bogel?
Yes.
Charlotte P.?
Yes.
Craig Gooch?
Yes.
Jim Thompson? Michael Shirley?
Yes.
Jason Beavers? Pettis Reed?
Yes.
Christian Carey?
It has been approved.
Thank you.
Three long years later?
But like I said, this is just, and like Rhonda had mentioned in her letter, you know, this is not the end, it's, it's just the beginning. There'll be a lot, a lot more discussion on this as we move forward. If there's, I'm sorry, if there's no other comments on that, I can go on.
I just want to say one more thing. Rhonda, does face some health issues. Please keep her in your prayers. Mosse?
Something else I wanted to bring to your attention, this is not related to Plan Rutherford, but this is something that I think planning commissioners may find interesting and might want to take advantage of. The State Planning Chapter, Tennessee APA, TAPA as we call it, the Fall Conference this year is located in Franklin. So it's in our neck of the woods this year. We have five sections as far as the, the state planning chapter goes, and this is Middle Tennessee Sections Year to host the state conference. So that will be October the 20th through the 22nd. That's a little different than it's been in the past. Usually it's a Wednesday through Friday. We're doing it on a Monday through Wednesday this year. It's going to be in Franklin. If any of you would like to attend, there are going to be some sessions specifically dealing with planning commissioner training and Board of, Board of Zoning Appeal member training. Just let me know if anyone's interested in going, we can help cover the, or we can cover the cost for that under our training line item, plus that would go toward your required four-year, I'm sorry, four hours per year of annual training as well. The agenda has not been set yet, they're still working through the call for presentations, so that's, that's still kind of a work in progress. But I know that there are, there are going to be some training for planning commissioners and BZA. There's a couple of options for planning commission members, if you wanted to do the whole conference, or if you just wanted to do the specific training sessions. So either way, if you guys would like to do that, we'd be happy to accommodate that. So just let me know. We've got some time, registration is open now, but we've, we've got some time. I'll make some other reminders of you, I'll probably send you a link to, just to kind of give you an idea of what's happening with that. But like I said, no agenda right now, but the things are progressing with that.
Doug, did you say the 20th through the 22nd?
Yes, of October, that's correct. Yes, and I will email that out tomorrow. Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. That sounds, we really don't have it that close.
No, it's basically, it's every five years. Of course, now COVID kind of threw a monkey wrench and all that, where we lost a year with one of the conferences, but, so it ended up being six years since the last time. It was 2019 was the last time it was here, but generally it's five years is what you're looking at.
Just remember that our next regular planning commission meeting will be September the 22nd, 2025, right here. Anything else?
I don't have anything, Mike.
One, one last question. Doug, has that document been updated with the last?
Yes, with the last changes that we made. Yes, the link on that, yes, sir.
It's on the website, it can be downloaded, it can be saved as?
Yes, what we're going to do now that we've got it adopted, now it's still, if you're on Plan Rutherford's website, it'll still say, view the draft document. What we'll do is download the latest and greatest and get it on our website, so it's the official, if you will.
It's official, just as it says within there, it supersedes, as the resolution says, it supersedes a 2011 document. We actually can use this one because we have now approved it. All right, anything else? If not, we're adjourned.